Go ahead.
Yeah, please do.
Gail has it up on your, on the screen this minute. I'm trying to pull mine up here.
You're moving fast, sorry.
No, but what we did was, and I think you can ask any of the administrators, we had done some work on this and we weren't sure exactly where the priorities would be. Once the priorities were nailed, then what we did was we tried to go through and make sure that we were able to put annual goals underneath there. And I think that we probably worked for two and a half, three hours on this at least. Wanted to make sure that what we're putting in there is logical and want to make sure that what we're putting in there falls under the priorities. I'm not going to go through and read each one to you, but what I would say is let's take a look at the first one. And are there any questions about the community partnerships that we're talking about or some of the action steps that we have there?
I don't have questions. I just want to say that through all the time that we've worked on this, I'm really excited about this goal. And I think the thing I'm most excited about is I see it impacting all four buildings equally. It's just, I, you know, I was chatting with Deb and I just, it makes you want to like stick around and see what you're going to do with this. I'm, I'm just really pleased, so I'll leave it at that.
Or administrative team, if you guys have anything that you want to add. Sorry, I'm making pizza a little bit or two.
Me too, we're excited. We left the session we're being on this and with all of them as a whole, I think we're really excited and see cohesiveness in it. One of the things we did talk about with this first one is I think a large, I would venture to say majority of our staff K-12 have some type of partnership with the community in some way. And so we hope that we can just not overwhelm them with, yes, you have to do this, but that first year, just let's recognize where at around the year that you already have just had a conversation with somebody about how to enhance a lesson or actually brought someone in or done a unit with people. And then continue on through there, but what we're very excited about.
I think the survey offers an opportunity for those folks who don't feel they have anything to offer to recognize that they do. And that's what we've been talking about all along is bringing in those other folks.
I know it's the 2021, I'm sorry.
Isn't that supposed to be a link that underlined that usually-
For the survey?
For survey?
Yes, it's a link to this actual survey.
Do you already have a survey? What do you think is like where it's going to be?
It's a, like a template, yeah.
It's an older one that we're rebranding.
I just asked, I wasn't sure if that was like-
Good question. It's moving to the 2021, but I, I get excited about the fact that we're able to go ahead and take our local businesses and partner with them to see what we can do. I mean, I think that we're setting ideally to partner with a lot of businesses through the AIMS Chamber or it can be in general. And even, you know, the part there about hosting a small business owners, the non-traditional learning atmosphere type of setting, I think will be an excellent opportunity. This is one that I think that people, when we were talking about this as a whole, as a priority, we said, hey, do we want, we want to make sure that, that we're recognizing those, you know, those community members and understanding that there's a lot to offer out there.
So I like the approach as well. My question would be, it talks about in the community partnerships at the teacher level. And how, how do you see that coming together at the building level? Or will it, I mean, will there be some common trends for what you do in elementary, which is different than what you do in high school? Because these, these goals talk about the teachers, but what do you see your roles or your teacher leader staff's roles and kind of bringing that together?
Yeah, and we really talked about, because I think our end goal is to create more, maybe that bigger picture partnership pieces. And so we felt like this was a nice start. And then that piece that we can say like, oh, we're going to partner with, you know, BASF is going to come in and do something with our students and, you know, together as a school, not just as a one-time, but a larger partnership, whether that comes with financial resources or that comes for, with programming as well and some of those things. I mean, I think we kind of talked about, echo some of those things maybe that scale has attempted to do, maybe at that high school level, but has, on a larger-
And the trends I'm thinking about are for you guys to have a handle of, you know, bigger scope. And at least when we were going through this, one of my expectations of this was that we then would be open to all, right? And including when you start talking about businesses and such, it might be construction, it might be high tech, it might be everything. So that, you know, if it's at the teacher level, then it rolls up and say, are we getting a broad overview here? Are we still heavily slanted towards high tech when I think we want to continue to broaden it out, right?
That's where, that's where really collecting the data comes to play, because we have to, then we can, then we can do what a sort of gap analysis to see, okay, where are we really, where are we heavy, where are we, where are we blank, where are we? So along with getting the teacher's mindset on, you know what, some of this we're already doing, but not having really thought about how those connections are. So it kind of plays a double duty thing.
And I think Tyler, that, what you're saying, we had a pretty good conversation about more with priority three, which I think is related or connected. And we didn't flush that one out maybe as well as we did the other two, because we were a little stuck with that one. But, but what you're saying, those were a lot of conversations we had around priority three.
And I guess last thing on this one, which probably plays with all of them, is that would there be an expectation of what is the deliverable to share with the board, right? So I don't think we want to see the entire survey or all this, but be thinking about, well, these, this was, as you said, Kim, this is already happening, so document that and kind of, I think that'd be healthy for the board to get some overviews. And I don't know that that's necessarily just all at the end of the year. Here's, you know, the whole year synopsis as much as this is how it's going and this is what we're learning from this. So that would be the only other thing I, I saw here. I like it. It would be, how do you, how do you put the trends together and then what would it be that you'd share with the board?
And also part of that survey, and we just, we just spent a little bit of time, and this mic will probably be able to speak to this a little better, but the survey had actually career strands that our community members can kind of select, which I think will give us a good profile if we have a variety of those strands represented. And if not, then it's a matter of trying to dig in and who can we connect with that has some backgrounds in construction trades or maybe we're looking for people that have mathematical backgrounds, but we didn't have a lot of information about that. We start kind of seeking that out and making sure that those areas are, you know, in place where our teachers can make good selections of who to partner with.
One thought, too, and this just came up as a result, I was in a peer group meeting with a CEO from a bank in Jefferson, and they're, they're having a $35 million bond issue passed with Iowa Central Community College, I think, and they're going to be working on some programming with, with, I think it starts right at elementary and it's this collaboration between a community college and, and the high, or, and the school, I should say. And so the point being in the whole thing is, is would there be a possibility that we should look at some other, you know, school business collaborations that we think are working really well and maybe leverage some of those rather than, and you guys might have some better ideas of more of those that are out there, but, but maybe, maybe, you know, you know, kick the tires on those as well. And maybe, and maybe it's not necessary to have on there, but that was the only thing I was thinking is, 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 you know, some of these, some of them might have some pretty good ideas for us. And I know we have visited some of them, but, but I thought to the extent of that you guys would have some, you'd be like, yeah, that's something we could look at. And it might be a whole different, might be a whole different business that you're looking at, but I just want to see the model of what they use and how they made it happen. And maybe that's part of the upfront, you know, due diligence as well.
You're exactly right, John. There's a superintendent from Green County and some of their people came up to visit our school when they were looking at things.
Oh, okay.
And they were talking, I think they call it an academy that they, they're doing with Iowa Central. But it is exciting what they're talking about and I would like to learn more about how they're doing that, because we have an excellent opportunity or a workplace that we could do that too.
Right, right.
So that's a very good idea.
Can I ask a, a larger question? Like, I'm really, I think I'm struggling to, and this already came up, right, with Tyler and Isaiah Mike or Vic, but like, some of these things fit so well in priority one or three. Like, how did, I'm curious like how you made decisions as to like, for example, like the survey and talent database versus like multiple career opportunities. Like, how did you figure, how was that figured out between like, hey, that's actually set for one or three?
Well, for a while, we copy and paste everything we did in one and three. And then we got back to one, because they do really connect well.
Yes.
Together.
I think for me, the thing that I heard a lot was about one being about partnerships and engaging the community. And so that's where we tried to, I think, separate out as if it was specific to career exploration or career education, maybe that fell to three. And if it was about building partnerships, then we left that in, in one. But that seemed to be maybe a dividing line, at least for me, but-
My follow-up question is like, it feels like the, the action steps and even community partnerships, these two boxes sort of crowd out like what's put in the notes section down there, which is around culture and diversity and inclusion training ideas. One talks about, hey, what, what cool like vocational or educational things are going on? And another one talks about what are some, some more sort of like non-scholastic areas around, around a culture of openness? And like, I, I don't know, I would just say coming into priority one, I thought, this is good work by the way, so I'm not like arguing against this. I, I just, I, I'm curious maybe where notes fits in. I can just ask that question, that is kind of simple. Yeah, I'm already working-
That's just my question, how to read it, you know, like are those coming up or-
Those are things that, some of that is training we've already started.
Yep.
And so we looked at it as, those were things that we were continuing to do, we just didn't bullet it as a goal.
Other things you're doing in support of that priority, but not necessarily in goal.
And I think it felt, from my perspective, it felt a little bit like maybe the, the board had differing opinions on what that one might be. Like we heard about community partnerships, but then we also heard about the openness to ideas. And it kind of felt like-
Yep, yep.
-two directions there. And so we attacked the community partnership, because that seemed to be the stronger, I think, tenor. But those are some of the other things that, you know, we have that would help with that openness piece to, I think John was the component of, you know, listening critically and, and understanding the value of other people's opinions, for example. You know, so it was kind of almost, it seemed like the board maybe had two different ideas of what that might be. I, I don't know.
I think that's right. I think what you're saying is true, that we weren't aligned and-
So it gives you the best of both worlds.
Right, we wanted you to know that the other, we attacked partnerships, but the other is, is still part of how we do business.
So Carrie, to your point then, under notes, maybe continue with culture and diversity? I mean, just so that's clear.
We could easily do that.
So we're not saying, don't do it by any stretch, but you're saying that the new effort is up above and you're going to continue.
But we're not letting this go.
Right. And that, that's important in order to actually respectfully receive that openness, right?
Right.
Yeah, because hopefully you catch it in just what's going on with the different groups coming in and skill sets. And so hopefully it's incorporated in that we got a broad section of people's talents and gifts that, that incorporate many of those things that are listed down below, I guess.
Are there any other questions on number one and the, the action steps that are below? Again, the, the notes are things that we're in the, are already doing or in the process of doing, so we just maybe enhance that even more. Any questions on number one as far as those annuals?
I guess just real quick follow-up on Tyler's comment. Do you anticipate landing in August with a breakdown of what you plan to do in each of your buildings so that we can kind of follow along with the year?
We're going to put together, which we are just, we're working on, we're planning that out.
Okay.
Where we will have a full professional learning calendar that we can point out, that we will be able to report back on where we are with what we're doing.
Okay.
And so, yeah, we would definitely be able to have that information.
Okay. Thanks.
I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. You know, I think, sorry, we're only in step one here, but you know, I think, well, we walked away from that, I walked away, I won't speak for my other fellow board members, but I think this is true for them too, from that work session we had with the two AA facilitators in the combo, we're like, man, we are so aligned on this stuff. And I, I really appreciate the hard work that went into putting together these action, these action steps and community partnerships. And I know, I like that you all are presenting to us and like, this is your thing to own. We kind of set these big ideas out and so I'm really, I'm excited for what this could yield. I think, I'm really excited about like the, on the priority one, some of the notes section and really pushing on some of those ideas. I think that we, we have a, we have an existing demographic with our student base. We can't change that. And where we can augment that is by some of the, the opportunities we bring in, the way that we train our staff, even hiring practices. So I, I think, I'm, me personally, I think I'm most excited about that notes section on priority one, and I don't know if that ever bubble up into official language or not, but just knowing that we together in this room share that is something we value, like is meaningful to me. So thank you for that.
Do you care if we move to number two?
That sounds great.
Let's look at number two, building essential life skills. Again, this is where we're going to be talking about that portrait of a graduate work. We were meeting today and going through some of the, the information on that. I had to call out a couple of times, so I didn't get the full extent of meeting with the group. But I think that, that right now, we probably have what, and I'm probably looking down at Carrie a little bit for this, we probably have what those, those words are, are pretty much close to those words. Is that right, Carrie?
Yeah, we, and for our pillars, our graduate pillars, are worried, we would like our worried to look at, students will demonstrate, because we, we want evidence of that and then we need to have evidence of feedback on how are we giving feedback to our students. So we've broken it down into global citizenship, collaboration, effective communication, strong character, creativity, critical thinking. So those are our, our six heavy hitters.
Can you go over those again?
I sure will.
Are they, they're not on there?
No, they're not.
No, they're not on there. We didn't add them on there, but we sure can. But I will, if you want them, I'll write, I'll say them real quick.
Yes, please.
Okay. Global citizenship, collaboration, effective communication, strong character, creativity, And those all have come about from multiple groups. And I mean, we also took the information from that community event where to see, okay, are we, are we on the right track? And, you know, we feel we are. So that's, that's where we've landed.
And you can see on this one, this isn't something, and I think we've talked about this all along, this isn't something that's going to happen in just a, a year period of time. This is going to happen over a period of time. And, you know, you know, some of the things that we just, side note is that we are in the latter part of July as an administrative team heading out to the vacation capital of Columbus, Ohio. Is that right?
They have a brief on it.
And we will be working on some of these things that, that are out there with Portrait of a Graduate and trying to get that even, firmed up even more than what it is. But I, I just wanted to point out that you can see that this isn't something that will happen in just a one-year period. It'll happen over a three-year period. And the, the notes down below are the same things that we talked about with the, the one on the number one. We're doing, you know, some of these things. So we thought that they would be things that we would want to make sure that, that we continue or we maybe, you know, take it to another level. I don't know how you want to classify that. Anyone want to add anything to that?
No, I, I think that we should, just as we did above, we made a note of changing notes to continuation, but that, that mental health piece is, is a very big piece. And, you know, we've got parts and piece, I mean, we've got, the community event will still be happening. Our guidance counselors are already on top of that. We will have a day, one of our PD sessions will be focused around that and looking at different ways of really digging into data that we're collecting. So even though it doesn't have bullet points, specific bullet points in the box, it's a big part of what we do.
I have a question. It's just a question or clarification. So under number two of notes, relevant life, ready curriculum, gap analysis, do you think, so I was going back up to one. Oh, great, I think I'm off a year, sorry. It talks about the professional learning opportunities for staff. Do you, like, how do you plan to do that gap analysis? Or is there a, you're doing it now, but-
The gap analysis-
Is that through feedback from-
It's really looking at-
Or, you know?
It's really looking at what we're doing and what's happening in the classroom? And how does that align with, what are the parts that, that we're missing as we look at that? What are the parts, maybe do we have, let's say we were going to, let's say we're talking about, with, under this bullet, we have an under relevant life-ready curriculum. So where are those pieces happening now? And where are they not happening at all? Like, are we really heavy, for example, in eighth grade, maybe, with what we do with the getting kids ready for their IBA plan and that, whereas maybe what, we have nothing in sixth grade?
Yeah.
So I think that's it, where we have to really look at where are those, in real time, where are those things happening?
Okay.
And then if they're not happening, then we have to say, okay, what, what are we going to do about it? So it's kind of like you, you need to have that to see. And sometimes there's times when we think we're doing it and we're not. Then there's other times that we think we're not, but we were actually, oh my gosh, I didn't even think about that. So that's where that's coming from.
Okay.
Well, and Iowa correlates out the 21st century education standards and-
So it's just a matter of kind of mapping to see what those are. Gotcha. I think I was trying to make a connection, but I didn't realize the years were on. So, I don't-
Carrie, the six elements that you described, are they, are those the vision points or help tie that back into-
Yes, those would be the vision points.
Okay, so we're pretty clear on, are we settled on those?
Yes, we are.
I mean, if we are, to me, it helps when you have something like that-
Yeah, those are-
To help clarify what that really means.
Yeah.
If, if we're settled on those and that several of those resonate with what we talked about before.
Yeah. And you know, we, yeah, they, that, those would be the vision points. Exactly.
Other questions on two? And I'm not trying to rush, so don't, I mean, if someone says, hey, hold on, let me read here, that's fine.
Hey, wonderful. This is awesome. It's great to hear those points, like, like, you know, thinking about what Portrait of a Graduate work is, reshaping some of our language around success at Gilbert. Thank you, I love those. And that represents a good collection of all the stuff that we've been talking about. A meta-question maybe about this is, is in all of the research and packets that we read regarding the, you know, building these three to five-year priorities, like, one of the things we heard from the staff is like, oh man, adding another thing to our plate, right? Is, is there any concern with this, Portrait of a Graduate work, that they're going to, some people may have that response?
That's really interesting that you say that, because we had a long, we really had a long conversation about that this afternoon. Part of the work that we have to do to go to this academy, we have homework we have to do before we attend. And so we were working on that this afternoon. And through the conversation, it was, okay, we feel that we have, or we, we feel that we've tried to embed and make those connections. But just as when we're talking about students in the classroom and, and teachers making those connections, we can see that, that teachers see project-based learning.
Yep.
AIW, Portrait of a Graduate, CGI, whatever, you know, in isolation, even when, when we, when we have made these connections, but duh, to me, I mean, I'll say duh on my part, you can't make connections for people. People have to make, it's a stronger if people make it themselves, let's just say that. So one of the things we were talking about and will be our problem of practice, which is what we're going down there to dig into this work is, how do we do what you just said, Ryan? So it's not, now, there's two different thoughts on this. You can, we can say, oh, you know, what can we take off of somebody's plate? But on the other hand, I would, I would say, what, what is the, what are the practices that are happening in the classroom that we need to change, that we can help support and change? Because it might not be about, it might be about doing something differently instead of, don't do this anymore. Because I would have a really hard time saying, you know what, let's put project-based learning on the back burner, because we're going to downdo this work. When really, the work is like this. So how do we work at, how are we front-loading that so it doesn't feel that way?
That makes a ton of sense.
And then the other thing is making sure that we're all aligned in our messaging so that from the district, it doesn't just sound one way. And then from the buildings, it sounds another way. So we all, and that's, that's the work that we really have to do, some of the work we have to do this summer as we dig into that.
So one question, just to better understand, again, the deliverable, looking at the action steps for 1920, define the vision points, which could very well be these six, and then identify benchmarks by grade span. So each building will-
Yes.
Kind of say, well, this is what global citizenship means to elementary, this is what collaboration means to high school or-
We will have an overarching definition for global citizenship, for example, that's overarching, that what we want kids, what that means to Gilbert. But then, as we dig into that work, Stacy's work, Stacy's laying the foundation of that work at, in kindergarten, you know, preschool to second grade. Then, but what, what would her building's expectations be of what that looks like to get to where we want kids to be by the time they leave next building? So that's what that grade span work will be. So each building will do some of that work, but then we're going to have to get back together, because what if Amy's, Stacy and Amy's work doesn't align? That our expectations are the same, or they really don't build upon each other? And I just chose those two, because it really is all four of them. So it'll be broad district, then we break down into buildings and we come back together, because we're going to have to make sure that we're all in this, that we don't, that the work doesn't shift or change over time and change into something different. So it's going to be big comeback, like, kind of like this.
But for all six visions?
Yes, yes.
Lot of work.
It is a lot of work. Now, the great thing about the work that we're doing with the academy and with ADLEADER 21 is they've got a lot of those tools for us. We have to do the heavy lifting as to how it looks for us, but, and we can tweak them, but we don't have to reinvent the wheel either. And that'd be silly to do that. So, but we want to make sure, it's just like coming up with these words, we can go to, we could go, we could have, and we had the discussion of, you know, global citizenship, strong character. Are they, you know, maybe we could just put them together. But then we have to go back and look at all the data from the work that we've done already. You know what? It's important to our community that those two things were separated. It's important to our community that those two things were separated. And that's why, that's why we went with, you know what, we could have gone with four words and tried to put stuff together, but that isn't what our community told us.
Was, sorry, was that level of detail in the letter that was sent out today?
No. All we sent to the original group was the priorities.
Priorities, yeah.
That's the work that, that they helped us with. We felt that this work would be better communicated as they reached their goals from a different viewpoint.
It just struck me when Carrie said, you know, that was data that we gathered in and this would be expectations for the community, the more that we can then feed that back.
I think we need to, you know, I mean, when we send out our stuff at the beginning of the year, in the beginning of August, all this needs to be part of that work. All of this needs to be part of our messaging. Another thing that we did as part of our work today was, okay, does our, how does our mission slash vision match what we're doing? And really, when we read our mission, we felt, you know what, with the, even though we all have to go back and I'm going to actually look at it so I say this correctly, we had, where is that? Is that in step two? Oh, because right now, it's, the Gilbert learning community will foster a passion for learning and empower each student to become a productive citizen in today's global society. Now, when you look at the difference between a mission and a vision, a vision is where you want to go. Your mission is going to tell you how to get there. So really, we, we think that our hashtag of every student, every day, that's what we do every single day. And we feel that really matches, even though we've had this statement for a long time, we really feel that they, they still map, that they go together. But, I mean, that was just, as through our discussion of the work that we were doing this afternoon, so...
So every student, every day would be our vision or that's our mission?
It's our, it's our tagline.
Okay.
But actually, it does fit. I'm looking for, where did we write that? I'm trying to look, we put that mission, vision in here.
Because vision's like what success looks like, right?
Right.
Yes, that is correct.
Mission, like, focuses on today.
Yeah, so the focus of today is, that's what you want to achieve. And the vision is, what do you want to become? So really, our mission is every student, every day. And the vision of that is by doing every student, every day, we are working towards fostering a passion for learning and empowering each student to become that productive citizen in our global society.
Okay.
So by doing that, by working hard with every student, every day, we're, we're working towards that vision of what we want our kids to be.
I loved everything you said, Carrie, by the way. That was awesome. Is it worth putting that as a bullet point of like communication about this as a, as a annual goal? Like, hey, we just did all this, like, work to construct it and then everything you just said, like, we also got to communicate it both to staff but also to patrons. Is that, I don't want to inform your annual goals, but everything you just said was around how to share the stuff and that seems really important.
No, I, that's, I mean, I think if, if you feel that we should, I mean, I...
No, this is, but I want to be clear, like, the annual goals are what you all own, right? So that's the danger of me suggesting, I just repeating back to you what you just said, like, hey, communication here is really critical.
I think that's very easy under the action step three to put that that information is communicated.
Yeah. I think that, that makes perfect sense.
So now maybe necessarily over here on the...
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Put it on the action step piece.
Yeah.
We just put that as...
Number three.
I want to be really clear, though. I'm just repeating back to you what you just...
No, I, but I, when you say that, Brian, really, a number three of communication, we should be doing that. We should be communicating that out in everything that we're doing. I mean, so it should go in, it should be on the last bullet under each of them. Now, I'm not trying to, but that's what I think.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Try before we wrap up. It doesn't need to be before number three, but, I mean, I just went to the website, right? I may be missing it, but, I mean, none of this is real up here in the website, right? So it's an opportunity to share the priority stuff, let alone when you guys are ready, you know, because I really like these soft skills. Well, here's the vision point, right? So that ought to be...
You're right.
All over that when we go to the website.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you have a, speaking on behalf of kind of the team that put together the initial, like, website push, but I have all these people too, like, feels like this, we're just resolving this from like draft to like finalized stage, which would kind of be the right trigger time to think about how do we communicate this on the site. So I'm fine with it not being there now, obviously, since very much like we're figuring this stuff out. But yeah, like, is that like happened, I don't know, I'm asking you Tyler, you brought this point up, like, do you see this happening at the kickoff of the, of the school year or before that? Like, what are you kind of timing?
Well, I think is this, why isn't it, it could be real time, right? So if we're comfortable with these priorities, we got to be able to find them on our website. I don't know if we can right now.
No, but, but I guess my thoughts are that they're asking for approval because we haven't published those, those six skills before. I mean, this is just like the finalization, so I think it should go, I agree.
I'm saying it's just real time when it's ready, right? So we're all in agreement that priorities are ready, right? We're talking about the cultural things.
Yep.
These things we're talking about tonight, I don't, I'm not expecting that they're going to be on here now, but that they should be is what I'm seeing.
Oh, right. Totally agree.
I agree with you.
100%.
Because, I mean, our goals over the last couple of years, which our facilitators commented on how great that was that we had those, I mean, those were never that apparent on our website, right? So new, new family moves in, they're moving into Ames, trying to figure out a district, they wouldn't see this. That's, I mean, to me, that's what the websites, part of what the website's for.
And I think that we can tag the, the thing that we're going to do with the foundation and opening up the school year, there'll be a, it's not going to be a magazine, but it's going to be an informational brochure about this. Boom. Just like what he said about, you got some people coming into the district, they can, they can pick this up and they can find out probably more than they'd ever want to know about Gilbert.
Yeah, and there'll be a page for this, this work, so, I mean, it's a multi-page. It's a multi, it's like maybe a little about this size. It's like our old annual report that we used to do, it's that size.
But there are districts that we can look at throughout the state and throughout the nation that, that have done this work and they've got a page, you know, it says vision right there on the homepage.
No, we need to have it on, you're exactly right.
And we have all of this stuff right there, so...
We need to have that on our website. You're 100% right.
Well, and I'm just looking at Van Meter's, and that's a district Carrie has worked a little bit with through this process and, like, at one point, they have, they kind of have a scroll where our pictures are at the top, you know, where mission just pops up and so you can just see it right there, a minute bike scroll. If you look a few seconds later, their Portrait of a Graduate visual graphic that they're using pops up.
That's it.
Yes, yes.
That's cute.
And two or three-minute video is good too, if, if you have somebody that can really, you know, feels passionate about some of those items and have testimonials, I guess.
Can I ask another meta-question since Brian kind of threw that out? It isn't excluded in here, but it's also not like explicitly called out. Do we ever make mention of our extracurricular activities that we have and how those foster this? Or is that just like separate, not, not a part of this? How do we foster some of these things within the various extracurricular activities that we offer? That is a question, again, not, not saying that I noticed there was a hole missing, but I just, I don't know, something just made me look at it and I thought it's not excluded. It doesn't say it's not, but it also doesn't say that it is. Is that generally just not been?
Well, Tinscoaching would be an example of...
Right. So I mean, you would consider it as yours too, right? And all that, okay.
Yeah, the things that we try and do as an education-based, you know, activities, if it's right with everything we're trying to do here, we could certainly mention that in there.
No, I, yeah, like I said, I just was like, it wasn't really mentioned there, but, and it's not necessarily for you guys because I think you understand that it's there, but maybe for parents and community members to see that these kinds of rules, we think of everything that we do here at school, not just maybe in the classroom.
Number three? Good? Okay. I think so, yeah. All right. The promote the multiple career and life opportunities. You can see that one of the things that we want to make sure is that the, the kids that we have, they have that career exploration that's built in there and that they, we, we do the things that are down here in the notes. We know that we do those and those have been maybe some things that have done for a while and some things that just come up within the, the past year or so. But we want to try to find a baseline to see, you know, why are some of these factors, what's the factor of you making your career choices? Is it because I set this idea at lunch and you're going to, you know, UNI, and so I'm going to go to UNI or I'm going to, you know, be a teacher or this or that? So what, what are some of the reasons for their career choices and get a baseline for that? And then I'd have to defer to the elementary or the intermediate people for the, you want to talk a little bit, either one of you, about your career navigator?
No, we won't care you talk about that.
We, we use Navigator. That is our old, where the students, eight, grades eight through 12, go through the system of career opportunities and the career navigator. And that's something that all districts have to do, it's part of what we do. Well, that system has an elementary component to it and we've piloted it in a very limited way the last part of this year, just we gave it, our guidance counselors had access to it. And so we're going to use it sixth grade, or not sixth grade, second grade, and then at the intermediate for some of that lower level career exploration. And so it's tied to what the kids are going to do when they get to Mike. In a fun type of way, it's very engaging and it gives them lots of opportunity to look at lots of career options out there. When we looked at number one, when it says getting that baseline, let's use the, our elementary kids as a prime example of that. A lot of times what they're going to think of as a career is limited to what they know. And so we want, is, if, as we survey our students, are most of our students really going at looking at careers because of family? And so then that's going to help us see, okay, what do, what are the things that we can do to help support that? Also knowing that we don't want to step on toes, not, I hate to say it that way, that's probably not a good way to put it, but of, of, we want to honor families as well. So looking at where, what is the baseline of where, where do kids, where are kids coming up with what they want to do? The other thing is, we also have to be aware of a lot of what some of our, especially our younger kids are going to do are careers that haven't even been developed yet. So how do we, how do we get, and I think that goes back to Portrait of a Graduate and being a critical thinker and being open-minded to lots of different ideas. And so I will, personally, I felt this one was really the hard, this was a struggle for, for us to really nail down when we did it. Like, I think Amy said, you know, we were like, oh, you know what, let's just, number one is really number three. And then when we looked at it, you know, so we're very open to thoughts that you guys have on this.
So it helped me when Mike, when you talked about partnerships, you know, the number one's openness, bring folks in. Our encouragement is make sure it's broad and we don't get too tainted one way or another. But for me, this one has always been really important. It's for career exploration, which is different than openness to folks coming in. It's absolutely tied together.
Yeah.
But I think, I can say with our own kids, it's important that we guide them better through, and starting as young as possible, to what is, what are the possibilities out there for what we know.
Right.
And even to leading to the point of, at the high school level, get exposure. Garrison, for example, is doing construction this summer for the first time and he's eating it up, right? But he could have heard about that in school, but just went, hmm, hmm. And I don't, I'm not saying he's going to take a big pivot and go in that direction for a career, but, I mean, to me, this number three is actual, by the time we get to high schools, really getting them exposed, whatever that looks like, internships, things like that. I mean, really trying to push that kids get to see lots of different things and they're not stuck in, well, it's what my dad or my mom did, right?
Yeah. I mean, research would say career exploration, the young guys should be about opening possibilities and then as they get to, you know, high school level, starting to narrow down a little bit. But I think that's where those partnerships, by, by teachers bringing in, you know, different careers into their classroom or connecting their curriculum with different careers is a way of exposing them to other things that are out there. The issue with like internships and, and like, we run in this eighth grade, we've done a job shadow for years, is transportation, because that falls on parents to, to, you know, come up with transportation. And so, and I, and I understand you're saying, okay, but...
Right, let's figure it out.
But that's difficult when you have 130 kids and if you're doing that at multiple grade levels, like, that's not easy for us to take on and so that really falls on parents. And I'll just tell you, having done that for years, there are a lot of parents that find it to be an inconvenience, you know? And so I don't know that all parents would necessarily speak to, I want kids doing lots of internships at the middle school or intermediate level. I don't, I don't know.
I'm saying as a board member, I think we should be better prepared and more, give more options in the way, right? And I'm not saying every one of the 130 has to go and do that, right? But I would say if there's one that's there and they can't, the reason they're not doing it is because they can't get a ride, well, let's figure it out. That's my opinion. I mean, if, if these goals aren't to stretch us and to, so number three, the reason it's different is let's make it different.
And I think you're exactly, Tyler, because, you know, as you noticed, that we had those things, continuation of, because we're kind of like, we really have done a lot of things to try and open those doors and, but clearly, there's still that need for going further. So I think that's where we're, and I think that's where we talked about that survey piece first and really collecting that baseline data for kids because we're like, clearly there's a, there's a line between what we've tried to introduce to them and then what they're actually doing as we move forward. So we had to figure out what are those barriers and, and, you know, if it's, you know, well, I'm only going to choose these careers because that's the ones that are going to make me the most money, then that's important to bring in those people who come in and say, hey, well, this is what you make being a, you know, electrician, a mechanic or whatever. And so I think that's, it's knowing that information, to know how to overcome those barriers, so...
And, you know, speaking to that, what age does that take in, what age does that really hit kids? Where they, where the money is the, is the primal factor in making their career choice? I, I don't actually, I don't know the answer to that, but we're hoping that, that those are some of the things we can dig into when we get information back from kids.
So Mike, I, I like the ideas, I like that there's those opportunities. What I, what I would encourage you to do is, if you feel like, well, we don't have the resources, is bring that forward and let's at least have the conversation so you don't feel like you're limited there.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's an issue with, with resources. I think it's, it's, I don't think it's necessarily anything with the school.
Well, I mean, maybe if it's not resourcing, then maybe it goes back to what we were talking about in the previous one, which is communication to parents to get them to understand why, why we care about this, you know? Because if they're just like, well, it sounds like too much work, I ain't busting Timmy around. We're like, hey, like, this is a big part of what our school is on, you know, and all this communication.
I would say of, so in an average year of 120, let's say, kids in long job shadow, I would say 90 of them end up doing a parent because that's just from a transportation standpoint, that's the easiest thing to do. So they end up just seeing, and there's value in seeing what your parents do.
Sure.
You know, sometimes maybe you don't have a clearer picture of what that is, you know, they're not just eating cheetos and playing, you know, internet games all day long. Or maybe they are and that would be fantastic.
I have a, I have a three-month job shadow right now. Yeah.
But, you know, so when we try to encourage those things, that's, that's just some of the pushback that we get is it's hard for parents to figure that out and, and of course, you know, I can't take the school van and drive 130 kids around and then coordinate a way to pick them all up and it's just, that's one of the challenges. And so I think we have to look at, you know, opportunities using Skype or using, you know, resources, ways to break down the classroom walls. But I think from kindergarten up to my level, it's talking to kids about what are your values, you know? And it doesn't even have to be specific to careers, just as kids identify values, that helps them understand what's important later on in a career. You know, money may be a value for some kids and it's not really our place to say that should or shouldn't be your value, that's your value. But I think what we need to do is start asking the question and helping them clarify their values and then helping them see what are values that are out there, what are some careers that are tied to those, what are interests, what are careers tied to those? So I think it's just growing on what we do. And then like I said, up to eighth grade, we should be expanding possibilities and then after eighth grade, you start, start narrowing them down as they look at, you know, career And then after eighth grade, you start narrowing them down as they look at, you know, career choices or specific to high school, class registration, four-year planning, those kinds of things. So I, I think we're thinking the same thing, Tyler's, yeah.
Figure out, there are new avenues to accomplish that, you know? And I'll throw out internships for sophomores and juniors, right? So after their sophomore summer year, after their junior year. Those are becoming so valuable in colleges right now that kids get placed into internships to either find out they love it or that they hate it, right? And what a much better time then than when you're all done, right?
I thought what was interesting about this one, I agree with what we're all talking about, love those ideas. And in some ways, I think this is a little bit about what we can stop doing as well. It's not just about what we do, but what we can stop doing. And I think we do lots of wonderful things here, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to pick on, leave one thing, but as parents, as community members, I think we just have so many assumptions about what the next four years look like for kids. You know, that some of it is just some communications, some different things too. It's not always just about what we have to do, but sometimes what we need to stop doing. I mean, I know I'm a district that requires every student to, you know, complete the enrollment work for college, that I'm sure puts some of them in a very awkward position if they're not interested in. That to me would be an example of something you would not want to do, to do the same thing, to promote it sometimes.
We also talked, as we talked about this one, about, you know, a big part of this is when we talk values, we talk what kids wanna do, you know, we can provide information, but, you know, we also have to provide information to the parents and let them know. Because I think, you know, a lot of people think, well, yes, kids should do these, but not my kids, my kids are going to college, you know? And I think that's, you know, when we look at the history of the scale program, there are a lot of parents that pushed for it, but then when, once it's time for their kid, maybe they say, well, my kid's not gonna do it, but I want other kids to, you know? So I think part of that is educating parents. You know, I was talking to a parent the other day at a graduation party, and their kid was thinking about being an electrician. And so other people were saying, so you mean electrical engineering, right? And she's like, no, but the pressure that parents put on each other and, and you know, feel for yourself. And so she said to me, I feel like I'm doing him a disservice by letting him be an electrician. But that's not coming from the school, you know? And so it's, part of that is educating the public on the opportunities that are out there and, you know, that all jobs have value, all jobs have respect. You know, so I think that's, we talked about it, it's not necessarily delaying it there, because we're not sure how to, how to do that, I don't think, you know? But, but I think that's a part of that too.
Well, and it's bigger than, like, it's bigger than what you guys would do. Like you said, it is, that's a community thing.
Yeah.
That's something we all have to kind of try to buy into, to help support them. I kind of, you know, the funny thing is, I look at them, oh, it's not funny at all. But the, you know, they look at, when I look at all of these, it's almost what you don't see there that is as exciting as what is there. I don't see scores about things. I know those things are all still very important and a part of what you guys do every day. I get those are valuable, but I like that it's not what hits you in the face. That's just, I think that's really cool. I applaud this, I think it's great.
Would there be a possibility of approval so that we can continue on and get this stuff out, like we talked about, to the public?
I'd make a motion to approve the goals as, I made a few tweaks, right?
All right, well, all in favor? All right, stand approved? Great work. I just, I wanna, I wanna say one thing, that this, to me, this hard work needs a really strong, like, marketing communication campaign. Like, I'll just personally say this, I can't wait to see this go out to the patrons and to our staff and to our students and really communicate this. And I think we've done incredible work as a team the last two years on this work, a lot, a lot of you, more than a lot of us over here. And I just, man, it really needs its time to shine. And we gotta find a way to make sure we push this so hard in front of people. Because it totally deserves it, this is excellent work, I'm personally very excited about it.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Open enrollment.
An open enrollment request. The information provided by the parents did meet the good cause reasons, would recommend approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, stands approved? Welcome to go. Thank you for reading here. Sorry, wrong enrollment direction. I knew I was missing something. Okay, so this, number six, possible board vacancy. We've had a little discussion last time, we didn't have enough room in the meeting time, last meeting to discuss this. It is obvious to many of you here, I'm moving out of the state of Iowa. And that is happening, my last day in the state of Iowa is, let's just call it July 18th. Plus or minus one day, but July 18th is really the day. That happens to be the Thursday after our board meeting for July, which happens on the 15th. And I, I plan on submitting my resignation to the board at the July 15th meeting. And I, what, per Iowa code, the board really has one option, which is to appoint a board member. We're too close to the upcoming election to issue any sort of special election. And so we need to appoint a board. You all have seen in the board packets, the last session, a couple of different strategies for how to do that. And I'd like to spend some time discussing as a board, what are sort of general, some possible strategies of what you all want to do. I'm happy to weigh in, but I really think it's up to the board you, as to what approach you have to do. And I have one more topic after this, it's all related to this, but I think this is probably a healthy, kind of breaking point of saying, yeah, of the multiple strategies that are there, like, what do you all feel comfortable with? And then with, sorry, sorry, the last thing is that we would make a motion, you have 30 days, so it probably would happen in July, but you would make a motion to appoint someone in the August meeting, which would fall less than 30 days after my resignation. And obviously, there's a lot of homework. If you, we aren't gonna like, just, you know, call up a random community member and appoint them without their knowledge. You know, so there's a little bit of homework involved based on what strategy you all want. So I want this just to be a healthy conversation with us, one that helps this board sort of, and continuing on in a lot of the exciting things we're doing and carries us into the November election season. So with that, turn it over to you all, like, you know, what do we wanna do?
I, I was looking at the board packet from last, from last meeting, and it, it did, the way I saw it, there were essentially three categories of groups that they recommended. The, one was like the past, past member of a board. One that maybe was up for a recent election, but was runner-up for whatever position. And then, of course, someone who is committed to running in the fall. Those being the three options. I like all of them because I feel like those are, those are people that have put themselves out for some kind of an election, they've, you know, they've, they've put themselves out there, is what I'll say. And I, I appreciate that, and I think that matters. That said, I, I mean, I have talked to some people, trying to find out who is interested in running in the fall and as well as people who have run in the past. I think it's a matter of maybe getting some names together of people who we think meet that criteria, if you guys have other criteria, that'd be good to hear as well. But I don't think it, you know, it's for what, so if they're appointed in August, they would take, they would take the oath or whatever in September, October.
Could in August, right?
They also could in August, I mean, presumably, they know who they are and they would be...
So we would do it that night, and then that night they would...
Three or four months.
Three months, yeah, three months. So I don't know that it necessarily need to, you know, spend a ton of time on it, but I do think it has to be a willing person and someone who's interested in the position for a number of reasons.
And I agree that I think it, it should either be a past or a prospective board member. I think it's very important that someone be committed enough to the district to say, yes, I've either done it for four years or I hope to, right? I guess my question would be, with the election changing, we don't have a lot of people who have thrown their names in the ring yet. And so is there something we can do to, to find out who's planning to run? Is there's a communication that would be appropriate or, you know, without running a help wanted ad, to say, you know, board vacancy? Because I don't want anyone to feel like they have to interview for it, right? I mean, we have to appoint, but, but...
We have, the correspondence we have, as I had, just received the other day, the timeline of, okay, the first day of taking papers. So, you know, we could put something about, you know, the, the elections have changed the date, and the upcoming school board election will be November, here's the timeline. And if you have any questions, I mean, that's, I'm thinking that maybe that could be on the website. Or do you wanna blast it out? But, and then if you're, if you have any questions or, or call, you know, the office or something and...
Yeah, so what are, I'm just curious, that timeline?
Yeah, what are the dates, can I go again?
Sure.
I just don't want it to be a trial run, I guess is what I'm getting at, you know?
Oh, right, right.
So let me give you my thoughts. If there were just one opening, I'd say we probably better really deliberate and we better make it as, you know, formal as possible, but there's gonna be three openings.
Right.
Right? You're not planning on running, I'm not planning on running, and you're...
You're not elected.
I'm quitting.
Right? No, you're leaving the district. So, so I look at it and I go, if it were just one position, well, then you gotta be really, really careful, because whoever you appoint probably has a good running opportunity to be elected, right? But there's three positions, right? And so I, I'd start, and so I like the idea, and I read it to, I don't know that there's any former board members that are probably even interested in filling that.
And if we did, they'd be secondary if they weren't wanting to run in November.
That's what I, that's what I would say. I'd rather have somebody that's on here that's going, I'm running in November and I'd love to have a running start. So to me, it's that simple, and I guess we're the board, it's not like we've got feelers out, but I know of one person, and that's it, that's...
Yeah, me too.
Planning on running.
I don't know one.
Okay, you know of one?
One.
Okay. I don't know why we wouldn't, I wouldn't, why can't we just say, right? I know Andrew Rikliffe is interested in running. Who do you know?
The same.
So I'm sitting here going, and, yeah, sorry, well, I thought you nodded already. So I'm sitting here going, okay, that fits the criteria. We know, he's been heavily invested in foundation, I don't know what else, right? So I'm, I think probably you say, well, it's open if somebody were to say, hey, I'd like to be considered. But short of that, you say, well, we would appoint this person to serve for three months.
Right, because he's had conversations, I mean, I do, I agree with you. He's, he's been having conversations, he's been asking questions to try and see if he's a good fit. I think that he's proven to many of us that he's committed to running.
And if we can move that up to July, even better.
Get him on board.
Can we get him on board? Is he still on?
Well, I mean, if he affects...
Not that, not that we're trying to shut him out, but he...
Effective the 18th or whatever, right?
Right, but he could certainly, he could certainly be in the meeting to, to interact with what's going on.
Appoint him, and at the end of the meeting, you certainly appoint him, right?
Sure.
And if, and if we get other candidates between now and then, or, you know, whatever timeframe we decide on, and then we just vote at the meeting of those, those two candidates?
So if it were, again, if there were just one opening this fall, I'd say we gotta be really, really careful. And I'm not saying we're not being careful, but I don't know that we need to make it harder than it used to be for this one.
Do you think, no, I, I agree everything with the logic of this. Are there any considerations around the optics of that? Say if we had four people that were going to be running, would this taint the view of the board to people that we, you know, sort of seeded the election?
I think if there, well, if there are four people, then if we were to send some kind of a message out from last, right? That said, this is what we're looking for, we're looking for people who are interested and committed to running potential in November. And then we got four names, is that what you said, is that what you're saying? And then how would we go? I think that we would look at those four names and make a decision.
Yeah, I don't wanna belabor it, and I don't even know if this is a concern, I just wanna voice it.
So I'm, I'll say it's not for me.
Okay.
And it's because there's three openings.
Yeah.
Right?
Very fair, yeah.
This person still has to run.
They still have to run.
Still have to run, they still have to do the...
I just watched through the newspaper, or how the county board supervisors, all the steps, and they had to do that because it was one opening, right? And I'm saying, I don't think it needs to be that...
Nope.
To that level.
Our, our August meeting is, I think, the 12th.
What's that?
Our August meeting, the 12th.
Yeah.
I think it's the 12th. The first day you can file nomination papers is August 26th.
And then they have to be in by...
September 19th.
Wow, there's just like a three or four week window.
Last day to file nomination papers.
26th of September.
It is the September 19th, the last day, they have another five days after that, they can withdraw on 24th. And then the election's on November 5th.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I agree with you, I agree with you. I don't think it, I think we have important stuff that we should be focusing on, and this is one of those important things. But I don't think it has to be overly complicated. I do think, if I heard you guys write, I, I do think that we should send a message out that says, there's an opening, and this is, and if you are running for school board in November and interested in putting your name in, is that an agreement that you guys say? And then we'll see what we get and, and decide then, potentially decide on July, whatever, 15th. You won't be here.
I won't be here for this.
Brian, thoughts? I saw the face.
No, I, I, um, yeah, essentially, yes. I think, I mean, this sounds fine, this sounds fine. I really wanna make sure that you four, who are gonna be working through this, feel good about it. So, no, and I would probably say something if I didn't agree with any of this, this all sounds great.
We've said a name, but that's because that's the only name we've heard.
That's service, yes.
Right, and then unless I've said, that's what we're...
So for another agenda item in July, then would be to appoint a new president?
So we'll take action on his resignation.
New board member in?
Yep.
And then appoint...
Then we need to replace the officer too.
Which I don't know if you'd do that before the new member goes or after.
Well, we have to, it all depends on, I mean, 'cause he's still, he's still a member until he resigns on a certain date or he physically moves. So we have to be careful so we don't have a six-member board.
Would I, helpful then, well, we should talk about this. Would the strategy be that I resign that board meeting effective immediately, then we don't have to wait till August, you can take action right then?
Only if you storm out, if you're willing to.
And we still have a four, right?
Well, I would say let Gail do the homework and make sure that, like, Gail's copacetic.
We have to make sure we have form to take action, because you're not gonna be voting on yourself. So Tyler's going to be gone, so then we have three laps.
But what we just decided is that we're going to cast a net.
Oh, in Colorado.
And so we're not guaranteed that a person who wants to take his place will be in the board meeting on July 15th. So I think it's important that Brian carries through the 15th, and at the end of that meeting resigns. And then we as a board have an opportunity, if, say, we had three potential hands waving in the air, that, that due process could occur and we weren't just looking like we handpicked someone out of the audience. So I think, Brian, you're stuck through the July meeting, at least the way I view it.
But with the intention, if all of the timing works, that you decide that night, it's the person's appointed.
I agree.
Effective this date, a date.
You'll need to figure out, like, John brought up, president, officers.
Yeah, that'll happen, yeah. Well, it'll have to happen either July, it wants to figure out the timing.
Well, if he's not active, you know, you would have...
Deft and then fill-in, but then the next meeting, have a full board, a left officer.
Okay. This sounds good, I appreciate, I appreciate this. I wanna surface one more thing as a piece of this board vacancy. I feel like this last year plus, we've had a lot of momentum going on in creating these three to five-year priorities, in talking about Portrait of a Graduate, in the facility work that's ongoing. And I wanna make sure, my request, I suppose, in part of this vacancy in welcoming someone into the board, is having really robust onboarding documents for us to the new board, so as a board to the new board member, right? And I, I think it would be incredible if we could create an artifact that talks about, hey, here's the stuff we've been focused on, here's what is, you know, possibly upcoming. I don't wanna truncate anyone's sort of like, their own convictions as they come on. But when I came on the board, I learned a lot around the policies, the procedures, how we function, right? But I didn't, I felt like one of the things that could've been better is having a nice, like, hey, here's kind of the accomplishments the last year too. Like, you don't have to continue this, but at least recognize, here's what we've done. So that there's some kind of like momentum transfer as much as possible. And I think that that's really important, because we do have three people coming on, so the voting majority coming on. And I think without that nice narrative, there's a larger chance for, you know, some... for, you know, some, some interruption in this momentum that, that we have. So I, I would love to see us as a, as a board, and maybe just the board, have a work session to hammer out a one-page document that becomes an artifact for people. That's not gonna happen tonight, but at some point, I would, I would like to see that. That would be kind of an inter-board document, obviously, we could share with the, with the public, that's not a problem, and with the advent team, but this is really from us to the incoming board. Now again, I say this as a request to you all because I'm not gonna be here in November when this transfer happens, but we could use this new person in August to have kind of a, a trial run and maybe as a forcing function for when we could compile a draft version of this document. I'm asking you all, does that sound reasonable, and is that something you'd entertain as a, as a possible work session in the future?
When? Like, we talking about before this, like, the, your replacement comes on, or, or using or working with that replacement to do it? That's what I was just.
Yeah, I, I think I'd leave that up to you, I certainly have feelings about this in terms of what would be in there, but I don't need to be in the work session necessarily because I know we have a time crunch. I think it's just really.
You're seeing after November, election.
I, I would.
The document ahead of time, but like, the work session would be after the new, the new, the election.
Did she say, he's saying with us?
Prior to the new election, I think it'd be important, yeah, to have like, just an onboarding, like, welcome to the board, here's what's happened the last two years, you know, hop in, and having that as a document is really powerful as a communication tool other than just a bunch of meetings, because you're already gonna be overwhelmed trying to digest how just the flow of things work, instead of have a reference of, hey, here's what the last board has done, and when they say this word, I see where it connects to the narrative. So it, it doesn't have to happen when I'm here, I, I'll be really clear about that because I think our timing is a little, you know, we're a little bit jammed up in terms of my availability. I'd be happy to, you know, share this with you, Deb, as sort of like, some of my, my thoughts on it, that you could, you know, again, either ignore using it when you construct this document, but I think that's important, somewhat to get this, you know, new fifth member engaged a bit, but also way more important on that, really, the, the three new members coming in in November. So I think that fits with point six. So if you all would entertain that, I think Deb and I could, with Gail's help, figure out a time we could do a work session, again, with or without me, but ideally before November, certainly before November.
I think, I think it's a good idea. I mean, I think it's always been the attempt to onboard folks, but it's, you know, it's, there's probably two parts to it. One is, well, what do you have that you're really aligned on to deliver? And the other part is how receptive is the individual to receiving it, right?
Yeah.
So I'd actually say that would be part of the document as well, would be some of the learnings over the last few years of, of having come on the board and what were, what were ahas, what were positives, what were negatives. So I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I think you, it would be great to have a work session while you're still here, but not with the intention that it's gonna be completed.
Yep.
But I would say it's only valuable really if it's alignment with the whole board, because if not, then it's fragmented and I don't know that it would even be received appropriately.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, sorry, I want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak to this or not.
I would agree, and I think it's an important first step in, in creating this onboarding process. We lose a lot of experience in November and, not experience, knowledge, we, we, and history, and I think it's important to, to create something that, I like the processes that we've put in place and.